Okay, we're gonna call a meeting to order. So we're missing Mr. Bertram.
Yep.
Okay.
He's at track meet time.
Well, I would be at the track meet too if I was his age. So we'll call a meeting to order. Let's see, no additions to agenda I didn't look today. Can I tell you I appreciate that for both of you guys?
Yeah, I don't like having additions anymore.
It's a hard thing because at the last minute you gotta do it and if you have questions you don't have it. So I kinda like that. Then everybody had this consent agenda. We have minutes from March 26th.
Bruce, can I stop you just? We just need to, we need to approve the agenda.
Excuse me.
Approve the agenda.
Approve the agenda, yeah. I was going too fast.
It is, it is nice out, it just isn't quite that.
Motion from Cheryl.
Yeah, I'll second it, alright. Let's do it.
A second from Ashley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Carried. Okay, then we have public comment, better get in order here.
And I have no requests.
We don't have anybody here?
Yep.
So consent agenda, we have the minutes on March 26th and April 9th was in, in this packet. And then, any questions on that one at this point? Anybody on the minutes? Then if not, we're gonna go to Cheryl, can you give us a summary?
Yes, I've got a chance to go in and look at the bills. And I noticed donations was added to the bills also. And that was an interesting addition. I didn't see anything really out of the way. The school survey's been sent out. I did take note of that, the billing was in there. And I'm anxious to see.
Are we gonna talk about that at all later or?
It's not on the agenda. I have a little bit to talk about in my communication piece, but there's nothing to do with the, the board doesn't have to do anything with it this month.
But it'll be interesting to see what, how that turns out.
I am excited to see how it turns out, but I will say I've had a lot of separate people say to me, well, I can't fill it out because it has an ID with it and they're gonna know how I voted on stuff then.
Oh, maybe we can address that a little later?
Sure.
Also, our new water softener was installed. And is, I assume, working well?
I've not heard that it isn't. I don't hang out in the water softener room though either, so.
What does a water softener cost for a school?
Thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. It's an industrial size.
I thought it was probably gonna be worse than that, I just had no idea you could, such a volume of water.
That's installed, so.
Okay.
And I see that our gym floors have been refinished or are going to be?
Will be.
Will be? Okay, so it's, it's, that's in the agenda yet to go. Those are the things that jumped out at me, but everything was pretty much normal and business as usual.
Okay, and any other questions on those reports? Again, we all got it. Personal items, we have. Personnel, we have two. We have the contract.
I can talk about these if you would like.
Yeah, why don't you go for it?
We have a contract for Rick Hendrickson, he is the recommendation for PE health and health instructor. He would be on the faculty for the 1920 school year and would be teaching in the secondary building exclusively. And then we also have a resignation from Nicole Tyne, our school nurse. She will finish out the year and then she will be done at the end of the school year.
So with that contract with Rick Hendrickson, is that like a probationary contract? I notice it's just one year or?
Yep, so this will be Mr. Hendrickson's first year teaching in Minnesota, so he will have three years of probationary status and then after that would be on continuing contract. So, yep, this is his first teaching experience. Any questions at all on consent?
I did take note that our school nurse is leaving with everything in place to make things easy for her replacement.
I think so, there will obviously be a transition and that school nurse position has been a position that my understanding is there's been quite a bit of turnover going back even the last 10 years. So hopefully we can figure out a long-term plan for that and have some stability in the position, but yeah.
I'm looking at the person to figure it out, cause it, like you said, it's been all over the place and we really haven't solidified that at all.
Yep, we'll work on it.
Okay, so if no more questions, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A second.
A second from Thomas. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no? Carried. Okay, now we're down to communication items and we move to.
I have four items for you. First of all, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the facility survey. It's out. I've run into quite a few people who are talking about it and filling it out and getting it back and everywhere I go, I remind people if they're residents of Painesville School District to please fill out the survey. We've had some phone calls and people stop in the district office looking for a second survey and so that is, is certainly an option. So I just encourage all district residents that are registered voters, please fill out a survey. And we look forward to seeing what those, those results come back as. I understand the question that somebody doesn't want to take the survey because the key code, they will be able to identify how they filled out their survey. I would encourage them just to come in and get a paper survey or just fill out the paper survey that they have or come in and get a different paper survey if they want. They can certainly do that and since you'd be getting a different paper survey at the district office, I don't know how they would know that that's your key code if that's a concern of somebody. So just for the record, Painesville Schools does not get any information about who submitted the survey. Quite honestly, we don't want that information. We want every registered voter in the district to fill one out and get it back. So we have comprehensive data that we can actually plan and make decisions off of. We are not in any way interested in who is filling out the survey which way. That's the, the least of, of our concerns. So I would ask that the board just reiterate that if you get questions from people as well, that that's not what the surveys intend, their intent is, so.
Potentially maybe some confusion is when we talk, we'll be able to extract some demographic data, but that is not on an individual level. It is more comprehensive that the survey experts will give back to us. It is not a person's name attached to any submission.
Correct. Our health insurance renewal process is just about complete here. Linda actually sent an email out to employees today regarding health insurance. We are gonna continue with Health Partners. Where it's a roughly somewhere in the neighborhood of a nine percent increase is what we're looking at. Health Partners, Health Partners was the only company that put in their proposal that they would also put a cap for our second year. And so that cap next year potentially would be a nine percent increase, that's the most we could experience. Obviously, if our usage is good, we would hopefully be able to have a smaller increase than that. So we will stay with Health Partners, some slight modifications to the plan that the insurance committee talked about and so we'll move forward with that and get open enrollment going here shortly and, and get everybody in an updated plan. And the transition should be pretty simple though, since we are staying with the same health insurance company. For a lot of people actually, they'll be able to stay on their same plan if they want to. Just wanted to touch base a little bit on the city school township meeting that was last week on the 16th of April, I believe it was. Yeah, it was a week ago today. And Rick was there and Ashley was there, Thomas was there. It was a good discussion. I mean, we talked a little bit about kinda what all of the entities have going on. And obviously, I think the school has a lot of stuff going on right now and, and so that was a piece of the conversation. But also, it was just interesting to hear from the township and the city as well. The one thing that I took away from that meeting, I think, was it was evident to me that there is a desire and a recognition of the importance of all three entities working together and moving in the same direction. And I think that's something that the school district shares, that feeling as well. So, meeting was about an hour, it was a good conversation and it was just interesting to hear perspective from the other two government entities as far as what their focus is and where they're kind of dedicating their efforts and stuff. I don't know if the three of you have anything to add to that, but.
I just pretty much reiterate what you said, that was, my, the biggest take is I think that everybody recognizes more and more now the need to work together. So the great opening conversation, you know, maybe not fully opening conversation, but it's a great conversation and we all talked about the idea that, you know, as we, you know, start moving towards this referendum, that it's gonna need to have more of that conversation between us and, and the city and township and making sure that we're all on that same page together as we make our decisions as a board.
The last thing I have then is just Thursday evening of this week, I will be actually going down to the cities to attend a session on personalized learning. And it's actually, it's hosted by an organization called Two Revolutions. They are being hired by the Bush Foundation. So the Bush Foundation is putting considerable resources into the redesign of schools. And at my previous district, we did work with the Bush Foundation and did secure some grant money through them. So my hope is to go down and, and get Painesville Schools into the process. I don't know if we're ready to, to go through with actually putting in a grant or anything like that. Typically, the grant submission is in October, November type of submission. I, I go back and forth whether we'll be ready to do something like that in October. But regardless, at a certain point, we are gonna be ready for that and so I just want to get Painesville's name out there so the Bush Foundation understands that that's the direction we're moving in, that we are interested with the idea that at some point in the future, we are gonna be trying to secure some resources from them to be able to do some school redesign and, and hopefully more personalized student-centered schools and, and stuff like that. So that's Thursday evening and that's what I have, questions at all for me?
Okay, no questions, we'll go to committee reports. First one there is negotiations and what we've had, everything seems to be going very nicely. So pretty much what we have there.
Yeah, I would agree, good conversation. I think there's a lot of things that we see eye to eye on and we'll continue working on it and I'm very hopeful we'll get something that everybody's happy with. I think that's a real, I think it's gonna happen, so it's been, it's been very good.
Policy committee?
I think our stuff is coming up here. Yeah, I'm fine with skipping over this, the policy committee met, that's why it's on there, but we're gonna talk two agenda items about what the policy committee's been doing, so I'm fine with addressing it in the new business.
Okay, West Central Education District.
So we had that meeting, I believe, April 2nd and most of the time was spent discussing the facilities. So Melrose, like we talked about last time, can't build or add on to their existing facility through their normal referendum, so they're just strategically thinking, how do we, how do we do this? And so there's a lot of options that they came back with of different places where they could host these offices. And what it came down to is that the superintendents are gonna meet and come back to the, our next WCED board meeting with some recommendations. Is that?
Yep, that is where we're at. And I, I think we're, you know, we're moving forward and basically the, the school building right now that the ALC program in Melrose is hosted in, that is the location that eventually West Central Ed would like all of their programming to be out of. And so that's really kinda what the goal is and, and what we're working towards, so.
I'm just curious, what is the enrollment in the West Central Education District? What, you know, sir, I'm curious.
Yep, it fluctuates and it depends on each program. And so they do track month to month and we get to see the data, but a lot of the programs, we might only have three students in, some we might have eleven, so I mean.
So to give you an idea, the ALC as a whole has an enrollment roughly around forty students, thirty-five to forty. Now that's typically, most of those kids are coming from the four-member districts, but the ALC does draw some students from other districts too. But that's the biggest program that West Central Ed offers is the ALC.
Does that fluctuate pretty highly, the numbers for the ALC?
It does, you know, there's, there's an ebb and a flow to it and that's all ALCs in the state have a kind of a natural ebb and flow that their enrollment kinda goes up and down a little bit. But that thirty-five to forty number is a pretty, pretty solid number.
Thank you.
Actually, one other thing, they talked about graduation rates within that program and so they're beaming because they're not graduating people on time, but when they actually looked at their data, they kinda said, this program's performing higher than any other program pretty much in the state. And so they're, now they're kinda looking at them like, what are you all doing? You're doing such a good job of actually moving these students through better than other programs. So that was reassuring to hear that their staff is doing a really good job and, yeah.
Okay, next is student representative.
Okay, so sophomores and juniors had MCAs today and from what I heard, I think that went well. My room, I know it went well. And then prom is coming up in like a week, so prom committee, we've been working hard, trying to get all that together. And then it's just, so the courtyard, since it's getting nicer outside, I'm pretty sure we have tables, more tables, but if they could be brought outside, that would be great because, like, I know today, there were a bunch of people like eating on the ground and just, you know, it's not really like fun, cause there's ants and stuff on the ground and then on your tray. So just if we could get the tables brought outside, that would be great.
I have a question. Ashley, where is prom this year?
Um, like where are we eating and stuff?
Well, the whole evening, I know.
Yeah, Dino's in Green Valley, yeah.
Guys, you got that large car crash coming up too, don't you?
Yes, that's next week.
Any other questions? Okay, then we'll move on. Full business, district goals.
I just wanna update the board on this. The district goals is not something that has been forgotten about. Been busy with facility survey and, and other data collection, so this is going to, to happen, it's coming back. I think actually the district goals is gonna have some play here at the end of the calendar year with some time and stuff as well, so I, I ask for the board's patience, I guess, is, it's, it's still happening, it's, it's not happening at the timeline I anticipated, so.
Personally, when you get to district goals, I don't mind spending some time on it, cause it's not the first time we went through that thing and if it's a useless tool when we're done, we went too fast, so taking your time is fine with me.
Well, and the other thing I would like board members to at least consider, I know typically there's only been one board meeting in July. And I'm, I'm fine with just having one business meeting in July. I wonder if it wouldn't be valuable though in July to schedule a second meeting, that would be kinda like a board retreat and we could do a lot of beginning of the year planning. And I think the board could also do a big chunk of district goals and strategic planning and stuff at that. So think about that a little bit, when I have a chance to visit with our admin team and stuff, we'll probably have a, a proposal to float by and, and it may include a, a board retreat in July, kind of a beginning of the year kickoff for the board type thing, so.
Okay, then we will go to new business, principals' master agreement. You wanna go for it on that one too?
Sure, so the master agreement, the reason why this is coming to the board is we're hiring an elementary principal. And so in order to do that, we do have a principal group that is a labor group and we have to address their master agreement if we're going to be hiring that elementary principal. So the new master agreement that's in front of you, the administrative negotiating committee met with both principals, the incoming and Mr. Orline, and talked about kinda the terms in here. Everyone seems on board with that. Essentially, the increase for the eighteen nineteen to nineteen twenty on the salary is two thousand dollars and the increase in the insurance is a thousand dollars. That insurance contribution stays the same then for the life of the, the agreement. Those are the two financial things that change, otherwise everything else stays the same. And then it incorporates the new elementary principal slash curriculum coordinator's salary, which would start off at ninety thousand dollars. That's what is, is new to the contract. Otherwise, 403B contribution remains the same as far as any of the leave language or vacation language, holidays, all of that stuff stays the same. Those are really the only changes to the agreement. Does anyone on the administrative negotiating committee have any additions or some things that I'm forgetting that you wanna add?
No, I think you covered it pretty well.
Any questions then regarding the agreement? It is a two-year agreement, would expire June 30th of 2021 and so it would just stay in the same cycle that it, it currently is in.
I'll make a motion to approve the principals' master agreement.
I'll second.
And we have a second by Jacob. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no? Carried. Then we've got the principal assignment.
So then this is the new elementary principal slash curriculum coordinator is Mary Homberg. Mary will be joining us, she has principal experience in McCory, so she will be joining us starting on July 1. As I stated earlier, the salary that Mary is coming at is ninety thousand dollars, that's stipulated in the master agreement you just approved. And then all of her terms of employment would be part of that master agreement as well. Questions at all? I do want to just say again, and I have emailed the community members and the staff members that assisted with this, but it was a pleasure to see the quality work, particularly from our community group that did the interviewing for the elementary principals. I've run through this a couple times and it's, sometimes you don't know what you get out of community groups. Sometimes it's, it can be, you know, they have specific questions for specific issues and this community group was just extremely thoughtful about what is in the best interest of Painesville area schools and how can we make this the best district that we possibly can. It was absolutely refreshing to have that conversation and hear that from that community group. I have thanked them for that, I was, I was in awe after, I, I spent about forty-five minutes with them before the interviews began and it was, it was a breath of fresh air, so. I thank them and then likewise, all of the staff members, faculty members that participated as well. It was just a, a good group of people that volunteered to help out and I think we have an exceptional candidate too, so I'm excited.
Okay, so we have the principal assignment. A few of us met this, are new persons, so I think everybody, from what I, I would guess, everybody's gonna understand what Matt's talking about. This community group had an excellent choice and I think it, she will fit right into our district perfectly and offer us some things that we haven't had before. So we need to have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the principal assignment.
Okay, we have a motion from Thomas to have a second.
Second.
I have a second from Rick. And any further discussion?
Does this have to be a roll call vote for it?
Okay, further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no? Carried. Then we're gonna move to the revised 2018-19 school calendar.
So this is, I, I was assuming we were done with school calendar, but we're not. We were done until the April snow hit. Once the, the April snow days came, there was some second thought about, do we really want to continue to just tack days on? I think we have a lot of things going on this spring. We have a lot of new changes coming next fall. And so I think there would be a collective release of anxiety if we just took a step back and maybe rethought what the end of our year looks like. And so with that, here's what I am recommending. I would recommend that the last student day for students in grades pre-K through 11 would be May 31st. Seniors are already gonna be finished on May 24th, that will be their last day, there's nothing changing with the senior class. The rest of the students would be done on May 31. And then we would take the days after May 31, that following week of the 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th. And those days would be available in order for our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our food service, all of those employees to finish out this year and to do the prep work stuff that we are going to be rolling out for the 1920 school year. The legislation allows us to do this, so we can certainly move forward with this plan. The only stipulation with that is, is we cannot have employees that suffer payroll hardships due to schools choosing to not pick up days. That would not be the case with us, cause if you're a teacher and you're employed for a hundred and eighty-four days for the eighteen nineteen school year, you will still be working one hundred and eighty-four days. We are not going to be reducing the duty year of any classification of employees. They will still work their full contract as was stipulated back when, in June, when the board approved the eighteen nineteen budget. The same days are going to be worked. The major difference to this is rather than having students in school until June 6th, we will have students be done with school on May 31st. That is the big change that is in front of you. Questions at all?
How do the students feel about that?
That'd be great.
Did Ashley really have a choice in how she answered that?
I'm all for it, but I, my only tangy concern is like, single parents of elementary students that maybe don't have family or support system, that had to find care on those snow days and now have extra days, they have to find care in June now. You know what I mean? I don't know that it's a big issue or anything, I'm just trying to think of if I was in that situation, that might be financially a, a consideration.
And originally, the calendar had students done on May 30th. So the, the calendar going into this school year, their last day was May 30th. So yeah, I don't, I don't have an answer, I don't know what that, what that hardship is, I'm, I'm not sure on that. I've gotten a lot of questions about calendar. I have shared with some people that this is what my thought is on the calendar. I've not heard a lot of feedback in, in opposition to it. I did have one parent that asked if we could just keep students all of June, July, and August, but you know, I've, I've not heard, heard a lot. And that was a, it was in jest too, he wasn't being serious, so.
Do you by chance know when summer pause program starts?
Summer pause is just waiting to see when the school year ends and they're gonna just pick up and start.
Right, so theoretically, they could probably be starting that second June anyways.
Exactly, yes. So if right now, when we end on Friday, May 31st, they will be ready to go on Monday, June 3rd, is, is how that right now is gonna work. Likewise, if we stay with the current calendar and have students done on June 4th, pause will be ready to go on June 5th.
Okay, so that, that wouldn't transition or change anything for anybody?
Right, yep. And, and Matt Dickhausen is just waiting for me to let him know what day is pause starting, is really the only question that he's asking.
And that can help off Ashley's question then too.
Yeah, potentially.
Potentially, if, if that was a consideration for others.
So if we're taking away June 3rd and June 4th, does that mean the kids don't have any finals?
Uh, no, they would still have finals, the end of the year would still, would just be May 31st. So I'm assuming it would be May 30 and May 31st would be finals.
I had someone ask me, so I thought, I told him I'd find out.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll still have finals.
It's a hard thing, when you don't know what the weather is and you just have to do what you have to do. I, my impression is you've worked really hard to try and figure out how to make this work and it looks like a fairly decent compromise and.
I, I will say just moving forward too, we have a group of, of teachers that have been very active in, in planning an e-learning plan for the 1920 school year. So I, I'm really hopeful that we aren't revisiting this type of a conversation a year or two years or five years from now, because starting in 1920, we're gonna have an e-learning plan that when we roll into the snowy time of the year and we have a, a day closed because of weather, the plan will be, it will just be an e-learning day. And so then that will count as an instructional day and, and we are. day, and, and we aren't gonna be faced with these, this dilemma come April, or May, when it finally gets sunny and warm, so.
So we'll bring that e-learning topic up. I have a little bit of concern for people that may not be able to hook up.
Yep, and they...
There are families that don't...
Absolutely, and we're talking about that. Our plan is not going to be internet contingent.
Perfect. So they download it before they go home and...
We're, we're gonna have multiple options for people to work with, but the other thing too is I think we are actually even looking at being able to have some hotspots in our media center, so that students actually could check out hotspots, which is essentially a mobile internet access point. So yeah, so we're, we're talking multiple strategies to be able to address that very thing.
If they don't have hotspots, you could run around on those snow days and get them to them right.
Potentially. Why not? Why not? It'd be just like the mail route, right? Rain, snow, sleet, or whatever it is, yeah.
Well, very good. We, we fight with this calendar every year, and we don't have any control of it, obviously, because of the weather. We have some government things that are taking place now, but it's all in betterment and safety for the kids. So do I have a motion to approve the revised schedule? I'll make a motion.
Second.
So a motion by Bruce, second by Rick. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, carried. Now we're gonna talk about the 19, 2019-2020 calendar.
Excuse me. So the 1920 calendar, it's the same as from last month. When you took a look at it, there has been nothing that has changed. The big difference is, is the back-to-school in-service would have two days in August. Rather than having one flexible professional development day, the district would implement two next year. Conference days would go from a day and a half down to a day. The other thing that this calendar has is commencement would be on Sunday, May 31st, and that is the week after Memorial, if, just to make note of that. Otherwise, it, it has the same, essentially the same framework. 184 teacher duty days, 171 student contact days. We will have e-learning plan in play next year. And then the other thing that you'll notice on here is there is a purposeful intent to spread in-service days, the green days, throughout the calendar. Our goal would be to try to have an in-service day every month of the school year. In the ideal calendar, we don't quite have that happen, but we're close, and that is really a prep work for us to be able to move in the direction of personalized professional development for our teachers. Part of that requires us to have some more flexibility during the school year for teachers and create some space where maybe the students aren't in the building, so they can do some professional development activities. A couple of concerns that I have had about this, or that have been brought to my attention. One of them is the elementary school is really concerned about only having eight hours for conferences. So if you look at October 10th, that's the conference day. October 11th, the day after it, is an in-service day. So there would be nothing that could say that those conferences could go into October 11th. There could be a half of October 11th available for elementary teachers to finish off conferences, have them have a day and a half like they have right now. I think we need to be able to approach a calendar with some level of flexibility. For instance, right now, to have 12 hours of parent-teacher conferences at the secondary building is not an efficient use of time, where it is an efficient use of time at the elementary school. So let's build a calendar where we can actually address those type of things, and both entities and both buildings can feel like the time that they're using has value, and it's serving a purpose. So you're gonna see some of that as we move forward with this. You're gonna see that maybe buildings might have some, some different things going on when students aren't in, in the building, and to me, that's okay. That's, that's perfectly okay. Different age kids have different needs, and, and we need to have a system that can respond to that. Otherwise, the calendar is the same as the one that was presented last month, and if you have questions, I'll try to answer them.
Any questions? If no questions, do we have a motion to, this will be our approval that we need for moving into next year anyway. So do I have a motion to approve?
So will.
I have a motion from Cheryl.
I'll second.
I have a second from Maggie. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, carried. Okay, then we are on e-policy review, second reading, and approval.
So these policies have been posted in the district office now since the, the last board meeting. I've not had any questions or anything regarding them. Again, the policies in general are very much technical changes. There is the one component that talks about the, the tobacco-related devices and, and how we're gonna address that. The policy 419 has the expanded definition of smoking, so there's, but by and large, it's mostly technical changes to these policies. I don't see any of them as anything that is controversial, and I would recommend that all these policies would be approved in the state that they were at first reading. And I think the policy committee would agree with that.
Is there any other questions? If none, we've entertained a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Rick.
A second.
And I have a second from Thomas. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, carried. So then, we're gonna move to policy review, first reading.
So this was our last policy committee meeting of the school year. So the, the first reading policies, these are all policies that need to have annual review by the Board of Education, and so that's why they're in front of you here. Typically, right now, our cycle for this year really focused on the 100, 200, and 400 series policies. Next year, Group 2, the board's gonna focus on basically the 500 series, which are student policies, and then the third year, the board will focus on the 600, 700s, and 800 policies. Okay? So as we look at these, there are a series of, of policies here that are required for the board to look at on an annual basis. The first one is policy 410, employee-family medical leave policy. The second one is policy 413, harassment and violence policy. Since, since we've already done the 400 series, you guys have already reviewed that, and that's why they're not in the list of policies. Because you guys already approved those, you reviewed them and approved them in February of 2019.
I just thought it was lost again.
Okay, so that's why those don't show up. Now Linda and I had a long conversation about this, and I think the two of us have a solution how we can make this more streamlined, so it's not quite as confusing. So we're gonna kinda do some modification to our cycle, and I think it'll be a little clearer for everybody as we move forward, okay? So we're gonna start with student discipline policy 506. This policy is, the changes that are being recommended are technical changes based on MSBA's update. They are doing things like, for instance, linking the student code of conduct to other policies that the district already has enacted. So for instance, in the student code of conduct, they used to state it was a violation of the student code of conduct to participate in hazing. Now, what they're doing is they're saying it's a violation to do anything contradictory to the district hazing policy. So it's technical changes along those lines. So those have been added to the student code of conduct. When we get to the end of this policy, there is a series of procedures that need to be incorporated into the policy. For instance, what is the procedure that Painesville area schools is gonna follow if a student has to be removed from the class? That needs to be written out. It needs to be part of the policy. What I'm recommending is that we approve policy 506 as it's presented here. Those policy, or those procedure items in items C through K at the end of the policy, I just wanna roll them from our current policy into this one. And then what I would like at the beginning of the school year, I would like Mr. Orline and Mr. Maher get together with some students, some parents, and get a group together to talk about these procedures, and then have them come back to the board in order to incorporate any changes to those procedures next year. 506, it's a 500 series policy. So what are we gonna see next year as just part of our regular cycle? Are all the 500 series policies anyways? So this will be one of the first ones that the board's gonna deal with come October or November. And so that's why I'm saying, let's just roll over the procedure piece for now, and then we'll get this larger group, a few more stakeholders in, and then it can come back to the board. Yes, Ashley?
So we're just addressing it now because we're required to?
Yep.
But you want to, more in-depth do it?
Correct.
On our regular cycle?
Yep, and so what I really want the board to do now is just incorporate the technical changes that MSBA recommends for the student code of conduct. That's what the, the real crux of what we're doing. Okay?
So we, we had some discussion previous where we had our policies, and then we had procedures, and we were gonna be informed of the procedures, but we didn't decide on them because it gave you guys the flexibility to be administrators with policies. Where, explain that from the content of what you're just...
Yep, okay, so, and it gets a little gray. I'll be the first one to admit that. There are a couple of policies, policies 522 and policy 506. Part of MSBA's recommended policy is to have some very clear procedural steps in the policy.
Okay.
I believe I want to follow MSBA's recommendation. Now, are these procedures gonna be written in any way that will handcuff an administrator or do anything like that? No, they won't. But I think we can come up with some general guidelines that are going to be followed in all of these cases. And quite honestly, they're being followed right now, but it's just going to be something that's going to be in black and white on paper, so it can be communicated and everybody can understand it. But I understand what you're talking about and the separation between, because you're, as a board, you're a policy governing body. You're not necessarily the implementation of procedure body. And so, so I get where the, where you're asking the question, and where is that line? And I would agree, procedures are left up to your administrative team, and the person you're gonna hold accountable if they don't get followed is me. Whereas policy is what you guys are actually going to assist in, in crafting and, and enacting, with the idea then that me, I'm responsible for taking that policy and implementing it into a day-to-day operational standpoint. Okay?
Yeah, 'cause, well, I was on the policy committee for years, and we worked to try and get some of those out to kind of clean it up.
Yep.
But it appears that maybe in slightly more sensitive areas, MSBA's telling us to get it in here. Is that what, am I reading this right?
Yes, correct.
But the remaining of what we're doing, we're not gonna change the, we were pretty certain that the procedures that used to be in some of this stuff didn't need to be there.
Yeah, and the only thing I would ask is when, when, come October, when you're gonna see 506 again, and you're gonna see those procedures, those items C through K, I would really hope that since all of you aren't in schools every day, I would really hope that you're really going to kind of lean on me and the administrative team to say, is that the procedure that works on a day-to-day basis? And if the answer to that is yes, I would hope I would have your support. If the answer to that is, well, no, this is really how it works, then I would encourage this body to really make sure that our procedures are a reflection of what is the daily practice. And do some of our practices need to change? Absolutely they do. They, they absolutely do, but I think by and large, a lot of our practices right now are very sound. Ashley, did you have something to add?
Well, just to clarify, you said MSBA has recommend, do they, did you mean they recommend that we have procedures, or they have recommended procedures?
No, they, they recommend that the procedures are put in.
Just that we have procedures.
Yeah, that they're in there. And MSBA is pretty clear too, where they just say local districts must complete the following steps, like for instance, in 506, when it talks about removal of a student from class, they just put in italics, you know, local districts must include their procedure for removing a student from class. So they're not in any way recommending a uniform procedure. That's a, a local decision that needs to be taken up locally.
Even if it isn't a part of the policy, we do really appreciate understanding what the procedures are. We do rely on our, our administration and our staff to take care of most of that, but understanding what's going on helps us to understand where the policies should go also.
Yep. Well, and I, I think there's a gray area, and, and so we just need to make sure that we're being responsive to, to everyone's needs on it. And sometimes that gray area creates confusion, and so we, we need to try and stay out of that gray area as much as we can. Okay? So that's 506. 514, there are no recommended changes. This was last reviewed in September of 2014. I would recommend that the board just consider this reviewed in May of, of 2019, and, but it's the exact same policy that's been in place since September of 2014. Policy 520, there's no changes to that either. That was just recently reviewed in April of 2018, just last year. Policy 522, that is students' sex non-discrimination. The recommendation would be to adopt the MSBA policy as written by MSBA. 524, there'd be no changes. Again, that was reviewed last April. 534, there'd be no changes. That would be reviewed last April as well. And then 714 is our fund balance policy. That I'm suggesting no changes either, and we would just denote that we have reviewed it in, in April or May of 2019. Any other questions? This is first reading, so the same thing that would happen at other first readings, the, when these policies are approved for first reading, the next thing that will happen then is they would be posted as presented here for first reading in the district office, is if people would like to come and get a copy of them, or check them out, or ask questions or anything, they just need to come to the district office, and we'll have them for people.
So do we have a motion to approve this for the first reading?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion from Maggie, okay? And I'll second it, from Bruce. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, carried. Then we are down on the school resource officer's contract.
I'm just looking for the hours. Here we go. So the school resource officer contract, and I'm recommending this approval. Rick did, did join me for a meeting with Chief Wagner about this a month and a half ago, something like that. This has been a, a rollercoaster. There's been turnover, and turnover, and turnover, and so again, this is something that we're trying to establish some stability, and I think we have a pretty good attempt at it. There's kind of been a balancing act in the past between trying to fit a regular full-time officer and how that plays once school's in session, and, and just how, how the, the city and the police department all manage that, and it's been difficult. I like this plan because what it's gonna do is it's actually gonna bring a part-time officer onboard dedicated for SRO services at Painesville area schools. And I think that that is an important piece as we move forward, that we have that dedicated officer, that it's not something that is dependent on probably four, or five, or six different things happening for everything to align for us to have consistent services. What that entails is 120 days of four hours per day for a total of 480 hours. The cost associated with that is, I believe...
14.5.
14.5. That is the dollar amount that is going to be put into the Safe Schools budget line item for the 1920 school year. So this would be part of that Safe Schools budget that you will see in June, when the final budget is, is ready. Questions about school resource officer?
I have questions on this one.
Yep.
So if we're paying them 14.5...
Yep.
And this resource officer quits...
Yep.
And we get back into what we had before, are we gonna pay them upfront, or we pay it by month and then we cut them off? Because the deal was that we had them here, and we paid them full salary, and we didn't necessarily get the service, and... And I like the contract, I think it's well-done, but what if? And they have a fair amount of turnover there, and so you could get the resource officer, and they're gone in 1st of January? I don't think the district should pay out another $7,000-some dollars until they get somebody in there. Does that, is that making sense?
To me, the contract is that we're paying for that officer. If they're not here, we don't pay.
Yeah, so this is the difference.
We're not gonna get somebody else.
Yeah.
Right, but we are not gonna pay them upfront.
It's a two, the way this contract is written, it's two payments. There's a payment, half of the payment is in September, half of the payment is in January. Now, obviously, this is what the Police Department and City would like to see in it. I would have no problem having this be something that it's paid out monthly, or quarterly, or something along those lines. But I think what I can't stress enough is, the difference to this is, is we are not relying on existing PD coverage. And that has been what has always gone on up to this point, is there hasn't been the hiring of an additional officer to serve as the SRO services. It's always been, how are we gonna peel certain hours off of our weekly schedule to get officers into school? And what this is doing is, this is leaving their force completely intact, but then it's bringing on somebody for 480 hours to be dedicated to resource officer activities in the school setting.
Through them.
Through the Police Department.
The contract is, they are gonna hire somebody to be here. It's their responsibility.
Right. That's my concern. If it could be monthly or something like that, if for some reason that individual doesn't show up, and they lose the individual, or decide they're moving on, I just don't think the district should be on hook for any of that. Because we have been.
But, okay, so do the payments go to the officer, or to the Police Department?
Police Department.
The City. So then they're just responsible for making sure there's somebody here?
Right, but if somebody leaves?
Right.
It's not easy for them to turn it around and get somebody else in.
It would take them months.
It's months, and I just don't, I don't be prepared.
Right, but I think, I think what's gonna end up happening, and this is, for instance, I can tell you what's happening this year. The Police Department is honoring the number of hours that they have indicated they were gonna be here. They're not, I mean, yes, they lost an officer, and there's been turnover and stuff, but they are not in any way not meeting the commitment that they told us. The problem I have with it is, for us to have an SRO officer in place that we can actually do some proactive programming for, I need consistency. I need to know what day the officer's gonna be here. Because if I want the officer to do something in a first-grade classroom, I can't have at 9:00 in the morning, the Police Department calling and saying, oh, by the way, officer can't be there today. We need to know, these are the three days each week you're gonna be here. And so, at least this year, I can speak to. With the turnover that the Police Department's had, they have not in any way skimped on the hours that they said they would be here. But what I see as the district losing on, is it's not the consistent hours that we can actually really do some proactive programming with an SRO officer. And so that's where, I like this model.
Well, I think it's excellent.
Because it's bringing someone in that's just dedicated for school services. And I don't have to worry about somebody, you know, getting, having an accident, and all of a sudden, the officer that was in school needs to be in, out, on a, you know, a street shift for whatever, and can't come to school for two days. This person is just dedicated for school, they're not even factored into their police force as far as what they put on for street shifts.
And I'm okay with that.
Okay.
But then when he takes a hike, or she takes a hike?
Yep.
And they have to be trained, and if they're gonna bring another officer in here just to satisfy the hours, this doesn't say that in the contract. I like the idea, whoever's here, this is a beautiful contract, as far as I'm concerned. I just wanna make sure that they are ready to come up with this. If they aren't going to, I don't think we should be paying them.
To me, if they don't abide by the contract, they've broken the contract, and we should get our money back.
Right.
But it doesn't say that in here. That's a contract.
But it's a contract, they break the contract.
It's a contract, yes.
But it says the amount is not, it is a fixed amount, and is not tied to a specific number of hours spent in the school.
Yeah, it says right in there, so it's pretty, it's not clean.
It's pretty good. Has Chief Wagner expressed any, you know, ability, you know, or knowledge of he can hire this position?
He's got people in mind.
He does have people in mind, I mean, whether retirees or whatever, he's got people that are interested, excited for, that'd be my thing, is right now, even if he's got people in mind, then, you know, it's, I'm interested to see how this first year would go, this route. I do have that same concern, that, yeah, all of a sudden, somebody leaves, and you're stuck, you know, training for a couple months again, and how do you handle that contract with the city, especially if it's not tied to any hours? I mean, yeah, it's a great contract, but I think if he's got people in mind, that we can, we can sense a level of trust that we're gonna have somebody dedicated to us.
I would sure hope so.
Well, I hope it all works too, but it's the last sentence, Cheryl brought it up. This is a fixed amount, and is not tied to a specific number of hours spent in the school.
Right, you said it's tied to a specific number of days?
I'm in consideration Number A, or a letter A.
Yep.
Under 11A.
And it's the last sentence there. If the last sentence was there, I probably wouldn't even have questioned this thing.
Well, then I would just say, let's strike the last sentence.
Or go, like with what Bruce said, go payment by the month.
Because you have it nicely set up for the mona.
The rest of it is very well set up.
Because it does express the duty hours in section, or...
It does.
It's all a few just referenced, that the contract is fulfilled, I mean, let's strike that last one.
Okay?
One of you is gonna have to make a motion as to how you would like the contract to be written.
I'll make a motion that we accept this contract, with the last sentence of Number 11A taken out. That it's a fixed amount, not tied to a specific number of hours, because that's addressed. But, that last little bit added.
Yep, that's fine.
I'll second that.
And we have a second from Thomas. Any further discussion?
This is a one-year contact?
Contract.
Okay, no other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, carried.
So the City Council did approve this at their April or March meeting, I can't remember, maybe it's, no, it's not. They have approved it, so what will have to happen then is, this will have to go back to the Council. And if the Council approves it, then we have a contract that is in full force and effect. And if the Council doesn't, then we may just not have SRO services, is where we're at.
No, start over and negotiate. I like what you did here. It's just, all of the players are the same as we had for a number of years, and we always have these first years. This is the first year, this went bad, this was the first year, that went bad, this is the first year, and now we have a really nice contract.
Yep.
But, you're the negotiator-in-chief, aren't you?
Well, I don't know about that. I guess I am now. No, and I think we'll make it work, but I just want the Board to know, you have approved this, but that doesn't mean we have SRO services. There's still another entity that has to agree with you.
And I'm open to that negotiation going any direction, if it's a monthly payment based off of services performed?
Sure.
You know, hours performed off that 14.5 contract.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the Class of 2019.
So this is a formality, the Board needs to approve who they would intend to award diplomas to. Obviously, the final approval of this is contingent upon administrative approval. So I would recommend that the Board approve the diplomas for the Class of 2019.
So what?
I have a motion from Cheryl.
I'll second.
I have a second from Maggie. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, carried.
Can I ask a question about graduation? And maybe you'll cover this in Board Notes, or maybe you can just do that in Board Notes, what the expectations and...
I think that's a good idea. I was gonna ask about same thing, because my first graduation, we kinda, just kinda went there, didn't really, and we have four new members. So, I don't know, is it gonna be similar to what we've done before?
I'll talk to Bob about it and get back to you. Yeah.
I didn't go through any expectations.
So, I'll be in touch.
Thanks, I'm okay.
I can't even answer the question, because I don't know what the Board's expectations are. Bruce, I know you need to be there.
A lot of times, what we did was split up with the Board members, so we had a portion of them. So I had to read it in this year, but you split it up, so take a look at the list. I mean, if you have a family member, and you wanna give them their certificate, or any of that, we kinda just met as a group before to make sure we tried to accommodate as best we could.
There's 68 graduating, so two of us will have one short of the 10, and we just take our turns standing up and giving out diplomas.
So, pretty basic, but it was a big thing, when you get there. Glance at it, if there's a family member, or a cousin, and you feel that you'd like to do it, take your section.
I loved watching you hand it to yourself last year. I loved watching you hand it to yourself, that was awesome.
Yeah, well, that's part of it.
It was your handing them to my grandchildren, too.
Yeah.
That was a lot of fun.
So, it's kind of, at least you have an idea of what's going on there. And maybe Bob can just send something out to everybody, so they have an idea of schedules. Then we're on the next one, Unrequested Leave of Absence.
That's my recommendation, as far as the budget, is we would be reducing that music position. So that means we'd be putting Christine Hadiya an unrequested leave of absence. So it'd be my recommendation to approve this notice, this is the time we have to provide the notice, and we will need a roll call vote.
Okay?
This is due to our block scheduling, will be...
No, this has nothing to do with the block scheduling, it has to do with budget, it has to do with limited resources, and it has to do with our pupil counts, so...
And just to recap, this doesn't, this doesn't impact any students. Students are still being...
There are no, there are no music offerings that are being impacted by reducing this FTE, that is correct. We will still be offering the same music offerings next year that we offered this year. Yes.
Wasn't she probationary?
Correct, she is.
Okay.
I, I am gonna vote no on it, and not to be contrary, and not to be difficult, but only because I've never met Ms. Hadiya, but my two girls had a very difficult transition year in sixth grade this year, and they had nothing but wonderful things to say about her and her teaching, and she had piano lessons and guitar lessons in music, and things that I never had in music in sixth grade, and I think that was fantastic, and I hate losing music teachers and art teachers, and I recognize that it's not changing the music offerings, but that's, that's the only reason I'll say it.
And I just wanna be clear, there's nothing in this reduction that is because of performance. That is, that is absolutely not anything that is, is happening.
I have good reviews on her also, and my grandson especially, got, dealing with her.
Then I'm saying no to this budget.
Okay, well, do we have a motion to?
Roll call.
Need a motion to introduce the following resolution.
Second, and then we'll have the roll call.
Yep.
So do we have a motion to, well, I'll make the motion, to process the unrequested leave of absence? And do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Thomas. Now we have, any other discussion? Okay? All in favor say aye. Oh, excuse me, roll call, go for it, Linda.
All right, Ashley, no. Jacob?
Aye.
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Okay. And then we are on the next item, which is a review of upcoming meetings, and...
Yeah, I just wanted to just go over April, or the end of April here, and May is much better than March, or April, it seemed like that was a busy period. April 24th tomorrow, we have District-wide Staff Development Committee, meeting 3:30 in the elementary school, I believe it's Mr. Gardner's room.
Yes.
May 8th is now being moved to May 1st. So the CTE Advisory Group, that will be on May 1st at 6:00 PM, rather than May 8th, in the Middle School Media Center. May 13th is the West Central Ed Board Meeting, 6:00 PM in Melrose, I believe it's in the ITV Room, Maggie, but if, have they sent out the invite yet, or not?
They did send out the invite.
Okay, I think it's the ITV Room in Melrose is where they meet. And then, May 23rd is the C meeting at 9:00, and I can't remember if that's a Kimball, or if that's a St. Paul.
It's usually a Kimball. Well, I, oh, that one, I don't know.
Okay. I'll get us registered.
Okay.
And so, we'll, we'll touch base, but May 23rd...
Hopefully we don't get snowed out.
Yeah, May 23rd will be the C meeting at 9:00 AM. So that's what I have for upcoming meetings. Yes, Jacob?
When is the teacher contract negotiations, again, it's at the 8?
Oh, you know what? I actually probably need to add that, because that was after I worked on this.
It might have been 8.
Let me look.
Okay.
Give me a second.
I was also at the, my first continuing ed meeting, and there were, they were concerned about a very large number of teachers that don't have their paperwork in, just as a note.
May 8, 6:00 PM for teacher negotiations, May 8, 6:00 PM.
Will both of those go on the calendar, the CTE and the...
Yes.
Thank you.
May 8 to 6:00 PM.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. And we are at the end of our list, there's something called adjourn, so...
Oh, yes.
I have a thank you card. A thank you card came, our Sunshine Committee sends out bibs to new babies, and we got a thank you from Natalie Lutch, her new baby. You would like to look at it.
I move that the Board do now adjourn.